Five thirty, uh, study session is now open. Is there any public comment? Here comes Carl, we'll wait for him. We'll wait for Carl to be seated. Okay, now that Carl's around here, um, any public comment? Please state your name and your address.
Charles Tripp, four nineteen Hastings Street. I just want to make a few comments on moving the city council meeting, possibly moving the city council meeting to six o'clock. I just want to say that probably forty percent of the people that live in the city of Alligan who work outside the city of Alligan, Holland, Grand Rapids, Kama Zoo, and the cities in between, if you actually want public comment to come down here and give you a comment, I think six o'clock is really pushing it for people to get back in town and make it to a six o'clock city council meeting. So I'll just urge you to keep it at seven o'clock for the people that work out of town. And that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, Charles. Any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to item number three. Does anyone start with Mike? Do you have anything to say, Michael? Nothing? Young man?
No comment.
Will?
I do not.
Carl?
Are we gonna be addressing the, um, change in time today?
Well, yeah, in the packet, number four, review of amended rules and procedures. So there's a whole report on it.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
And I have nothing as far as roundtable discussion. How about staff? Do you have anything you want to discuss with the council?
No.
Well, then we'll move on to item number four. Review of the amended rules of procedure.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Morgan. Uh, give me a second here to hop to the right document. So at your previous council meeting, we talked about making several changes to our rules of procedure. Those changes included, uh, what was just discussed, getting rid of the study session, which usually starts at five thirty, and moving it to, uh, six o'clock start, just a regular meeting, so one moves up and one moves back. Uh, the next items you're doing there is what I'm gonna call some small minor changes we're doing. One was saying that the city staff will get the packets out on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, removing the Sunday option, and then also identifying that, you know, when needed, we will send supplemental reports to your city email. We also have the area where, you know, the council may choose to excuse the absence of a council member. If a motion to excuse is not made, the absent council member will be marked as an unexcused absence, where past practice was always to excuse if we didn't hear from them. Now, you know, kind of puts the ball and the onus on them to let us know if they're not gonna be at a meeting. Other small things is being clear that the council typically will not issue a response to comments received during public comment, like what just occurred. Uh, it's their opportunity for them to speak to council, not dialogue with council. Um, that does not stop you from saying, hey, let's grab a cup of coffee. You know, you can meet with them individually after meetings, set up meetings, so forth. And the reason we have that in there is there's been times in the past where the council was engaged with a person, the next person in line asked a question, and the council was just stone cold silent to that person. So it made that person feel like, am I chopped liver? Why did you talk to this person and not me? So it's best to just not really engage. And, you know, at the end, you know, we just say, hey, we'll set up a time to meet with them one-on-one. But it is a case-by-case scenario, but we encourage council to err on the side of, we'll meet with you afterwards and have a conversation. But the big part was re-amending or proposing a new agenda. Some council members asked to see what that would look like, so that was in the packet that was given to you, and the order of items are on the screen in front of you. So this would move the meetings to start at six P M. Call to order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, approval of agenda, approval of minutes, special presentations and recognitions by the mayor or council. So this is like a high school team wins a state championship and you want to recognize them. Or a person in the community did something that was brave and honorable, and you want to shine a light on what they did. That would be a special presentation or recognition by the mayor or council. Then we go into first readings, like we always have, public hearings and adoption of ordinances, public comment, and then we played with this one a little bit between what's in your report and what's on the screen behind you. The screen is what we were gonna recommend, because we just made that change this afternoon at four o'clock. We would like item ten to be presentations and reports from government agencies, consultants, or special committees. And get rid of the written petition section here. Public comment is an opportunity for them to petition their government to say, hey, we think you should really look at, you know, making Cutler two ways again instead of one way, or something like that. This is when our auditor is coming in, and our auditor has to do a presentation on this, you know, the state of our finances, or if the county clerk wants to do a report, any report in the county clerk's office, which sometimes they feel compelled to come and make those presentations to us. If it's, uh, sometimes you have elected officials come in, because they wanna say, hey, I'm running for office, we're gonna direct them to do that during public comment. Give them three minutes, same as the rest of the public gets, is what we would recommend them. And then reports from the following. Uh, this is the same, city manager and city clerk, item F. If somebody's requesting a fee waiver from the Griswold, which, you know, happens very seldom now, um, but we do have one or two that do it every year, we would put that report under this. It would be a report from the city manager that such-and-such agency is requesting a fee waiver for the Griswold Auditorium, and then, you know, they could come up and give their presentation at that time. And then board appointments, communications from the city manager, and then roundtable discussion from the council and mayor. So that's the, that's the crux. So is there any questions about this agenda proposal? And you're not voting on it tonight, this is just discussion still.
So if, sorry, can you hear me? Okay. If we, or could we add another, um, public comment, maybe after board appointments? And then if people couldn't get here at six, then they would be able to have another opportunity?
Yeah, that, that's, we, we could work that in there. That's also very common in other cities where they have felt backlash, because no one had a chance to respond to a decision you made. So you decide to pave this street over this street, and the person on the street that's not gonna pave once they give you a piece of their mind, that's why they add it at the end, kind of a thing.
I don't know if I like that.
I know. We've been with the worst-case scenario, Bill.
I understand.
Yeah. That's, that's typical to have two public comments in other communities. You want, you wanna be outside, you know, you wanna be, you know, an outlier if you choose to do that.
I think that's a good idea.
Would that allow for somebody to restate what they stated earlier?
Unfortunately, yes. Uh, most recently, Ottawa County, uh, had that occur several times, when they wanted to tell their board they're full of malarkey at the beginning and then come back at the end. But they also were doing it through Zoom, so it was easy for that person just to stay at home and beep beep, and then, you know, say they're full of malarkey twice.
Isn't that can be controlled, that it could not be said a second time, or would that be against all rules?
I don't know if it's against rules. Our rules aren't clear on that right now, like, we don't limit that. Uh, we might have something like, if it's repetitive comments, so if you have two hundred people show up, and by the fourth person, it's the exact same statement, I think our current rules have the ability, and Michaela's looking it up real quick for us, thank you, Michaela. I think our current rules have the ability for the mayor to say, okay, timeout. We get the message. You are, you, all of you are not happy that we did X. Is there anybody else that has anything else to say besides that, kind of a thing?
If I can chime in, um, the section that does address that in our rules says the mayor shall have the discretion to curtail public comments that are repetitive and may limit public comment if they are so prolonged as to unduly interfere with the ability of the council.
So I'm pinning my hat on the word repetitive. So if the comments are repetitive, you can just say, we've heard this, thank you.
Thank you.
Board appointments, um... That doesn't happen all that often.
No.
Okay.
Nope. That doesn't happen all that often, most of these things don't happen all that often. First reading of ordinances, public hearings don't happen all that often. That's why sometimes when the mayor, or the mayor pro teams running the meeting, we have to keep their toes to the fire to either, you know, skip this part of the agenda, because there's no, there's no action item on it. But, yeah, we can add a second, you know, comments at the end of the agenda, very easily. I will share that, you know, I, as part of my city manager listserv, which is what the city managers throughout the state of Michigan, several communities have recently changed their start time from seven to six. And the overall response is they've seen no uptick or decrease in public participation. You've now been on here, I think, now for, this is your fourth meeting, I believe. You can see the public turnout that we receive. If we know it's gonna be a hot topic item, and once in a while, we're gonna get a feeling if it's gonna be a hot topic, we can, you know, adjust if needed. But, again, I'm not really seeing, you know, too much. Your planning commission meeting starts at six o'clock. Uh, public spaces is seven o'clock. Six thirty, thank you, Parker. The downtown development authority starts at eight in the morning. Airport advisory board starts at five thirty. So there's no really rhyme or reason on, you know, what that seven o'clock means. As for the comment, about forty percent live outside the city or work outside the city. I won't have to jump into census data to plug in that number. I mean, of course, we're not people that commute outside the city for work. Or they, I don't know if it's forty percent that leave, you know, the greater four nine oh one oh community for work. Any questions about these proposed changes?
No, I like them. Uh, you know, I think the second public hearings is a good idea, even though I was teasing, saying I didn't wanna see that, but...
Yeah, I agree with it, too.
So if you guys are comfortable with these changes, what we'll do is we'll put it on the next agenda for your approval, uh, to start with the first meeting in February.
The time change?
The time, yeah, the, yeah, the whole, the whole procedure's in policy. By just adding, you know, so we're gonna go with, uh, agenda format that you see on the screen, which is changing number ten to just presentations and reports from government agencies, you know, consultants or special committees, and then adding a second public comment period, probably after board appointments. All right, thank you guys very, very much.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, if we have no other comments. Number five is review of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five city council goals.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take a few minutes. Uh, as you all know, this Friday, we're gonna start our strategic planning for the upcoming year. The council goals, um, are established each year as part of the budget. Some of them are very specific, some of them are very broad. You're a new council, my new council, I mean, five of you are brand-new to this process. So you're not beholden to what previous councils have said, hey, this is a goal or an objective or a direction we wanna go as a city. But real quick, we just wanna hit these high ones. Infrastructure and assets, identify, prioritize, and develop a funding plan to maintain the city's various infrastructure and assets. This was something that the previous councils have always wanted us to figure out. I would say back then, and I still say right now, we are very much similar to a family that lives paycheck to paycheck. We do not have the luxury, luxury to just be putting money aside year after year, over and over, for when a roof is gonna fail at one of our buildings. We do have a cushion, but by no means, one night, the family's gonna walk home and the water heater's gonna be pouring water all over the basement floor. And, uh, households gonna have to get together and say, all right, how are we gonna come up with six hundred or a thousand dollars to fix this? We do do regular inspections of our assets, so we know the condition of our assets. Uh, just last year, we had all the roofs inspected at City Hall, the Griswold, and the Regent, because we just needed to make sure, where are we, you know, we don't wanna be surprised with anything. Four years ago, I believe it was, or maybe three years ago, we had a building assessment done at the Griswold. This kinda also di- delved into the sports complex, which, you know, less than forty percent of the youth that use the sports complex are city residents. So the majority of the youth that are out there are township residents, but it's fully funded and maintained by the city's general fund tax dollars. Um, it's not funded by any township support or county support. Um, as Bill found out this week, and Bill already knew this, but as Bill was reminded this week, the airport, um, fully funded through the city's general fund with support from the FAA and M dot Aero for capital improvement projects. But everything else is a city-funded thing. The majority, and I think everyone but one of the key, of the airplanes out there are non-city residents. I think there's one city resident that is out there that has an airplane out there.
And now they pay, they pay rent?
Yeah, 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 so for T-hangers, they pay rent, um, but it still is a, it is not a revenue generator, and we have, we have to subsidize the airport every year. Now, I'm gonna go just a little bit of a one-off on that, just so you guys understand this, since I talked about the airport. Every year, we have a capital improvement project out there. We pay five, two and a half percent. We pay five, M dot pays five, and the federal government pays ninety percent. So it's a big, you know, it's five cents on the dollar for the improvements we make. However, every time we do that, we agree to keep it as an airport for the next twenty years. So you're kind of not signing your life away, but you're making a long-term commitment. So it's not like tomorrow, we could just turn around and say, all right, we're gonna close this down to save the money we put into it, 'cause then FAA will come back on us and say, all right, here's all the money, you know, the millions of dollars that we've given you, now have to come back to us.
Is there a fuel farm there?
Yep, 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 there's a fuel farm there, so we make a little bit of money off that, 'cause we sell the gas for more than what we take in. But then we spend money on keeping the card reader up and running. Yeah, it's in, it's in the budget as well, but we keep the card reader up and running. It breaks down not often, but it does lose communication. We gotta pay our fees for Heartland, which is a financial thing. So I don't wanna go too far in that, 'cause we're, we're gonna dive into this on Saturday with all these big things. But I wanna stay on these goals real quick. So, truth be told with this one, my response to the council that have passed a couple of years, and Bill and Mike, you've been on council, I'm like, yeah, we can do this, but we have so many other things to do. And we're keeping the city running, so we have an eye, like, we're making improvements to the Regent Theater this year. We're making improvements to the Griswold this year with our funding. This is a really hard one to do, 'cause they're like, you know, finding, you know, figure out how much it's gonna cost to maintain all the sidewalks from here to infinity. I'm like, we have this many sidewalks, we know when a sidewalk cracks or breaks, we go in and fix it. We have a sidewalk program. Uh, the next one, develop a plan for the future Tresville Trail Bridge. Simple, eight hundred thousand to one point five million is what the cost is. And it's probably gone up a little bit since then. That's removal, putting in the correct foundations on the embankments and installing that bridge. Last council set aside fifty thousand dollars to begin the planning process. Fifty thousand for that kind of a project is a drop in the bucket. So we have just kinda sat on it, and it hasn't been brought back up at the public spaces as a, we need to get going on this fifty thousand right now. They might bring it up in passing, but it's never elevated to, you know, something of, um, real urgency, especially when we look at other priorities, you know, in the city. Uh, and then the third one is to explore various funding scenarios to improve city streets. Uh, you will be receiving an update on the Pacer ratings, so that's the pavement, pavement and surface evaluation report. So we drive up and down every mile of road we have in this city, which is about, how many miles, Parker?
Twenty-nine.
Good job, Parker. Every time Parker has an idea for a cool thing we need to do, I make him tell me how many miles of roads we have, 'cause we have twenty-nine miles of roads we have to maintain. And while those of us that walk a lot of times down Locust now, like, this road's great. Some people have to drive on Kalamazoo and Fifth, or Herkimer. Those roads are not great, and we need to figure out how to improve those roads. And five, in the next couple of months, you're gonna get a report from us that over the next six years, our capital improvement plan for streets alone is ten million dollars that we're gonna have to find to improve a handful of streets we have. We go grant searching all the time. We've been very successful in securing grants for our roads. Um, but, again, drive down Herkimer, drive down Kalamazoo, drive down Fifth, and not just drive, but put your car in park, get out of your car, and walk the street. They are, they are crumbling underneath your feet, and what's worse is the water and sewer beneath those roads that I just mentioned are eighty to a hundred years old. So we can't just mill and fill the street. We have to do a complete street reconstruction to replace the pipes as well. Um, we have talked about a street village with a previous council. We're kicking around that idea still. Uh, when I'll be at my manager's conference later this month, I'll be sitting on a workshop. I'll be, one of the, one of the workshops I'm going to breakout sessions I'll be in is gonna be focused on street funding for local governments, because that is something really we have to do on our own back. The state helps us a little bit with gas tax money for our major roads. Uh, we don't have that many major roads in the city of Alligan, so the most of the roads we have to maintain are local roads, which means local responsibility. Uh, economic development, continue working with private property owners on the development of downtown properties. Continue to attract new housing, commercial and industrial development citywide. That is just one of my strong points of who I am as a person and a professional. Uh, this Friday, I will be meeting with a couple that just bought a hundred acres south of the city, um, and they want to buy a building downtown to redevelop it completely. So got an email last night, responded this morning, and meeting got set up for Friday, so... You can just walk downtown and see the stuff, uh, the great work that Aaron and Dan Dewey are doing, where the old creative events is gonna be, it's gonna be the Locust Corner Building, is what the name of this building's gonna be. Um, that started in twenty twenty, when I was on vacation up north, and I had to take a hour and a half call with M E D C and Aaron and Dan Dewey to begin the process of discussing, how do we get them going? Um, a few of you are on the table, I've talked to you guys about your businesses and, you know, the Metro Main Grants and stuff like that, so you guys have firsthand experience of what we do. To, you know, work with private property owners on development of downtown properties. Community development, uh, continue to increase focus on property maintenance. Um, I would offer, we are making headway in that realm. Um, implement the city-approved ray-finding plan. Uh, the previous council, you approved the, uh, contract with Guide Studio to develop the construction drawings for all of the signs. Um, they are halfway through that process, and February, they will be coming to present to the D D A and then the city council on where they are. Uh, so we're making progress there. Uh, promote and increase the use of various city assets. Uh, the Griswold this year, we've partnered with, uh, the Alligan Folk Life Association to bring their, uh, Cabin Fever series, Cabin Fever reliever series, which used to be at the Presbyterian Church, it's now gonna be at the Griswold. Uh, we're gonna be able to sell alcohol during that series. We're not sure how many people are gonna buy a beer on a Sunday afternoon, but it will be available. Um, so we are working there to, you know, increase that, use of that asset the city owns. And then explorers, creating a single refuse and recycling hauler program. Um, that's just been coffee shop talk. No real push or direction, uh, from the previous council or this one to get this off the ground. And then the final one, administration, developing from a communications plan. Uh, we used to do a monthly newsletter, well, we stopped that seven months ago or so, eight months ago, and nobody's reached out to us to say, how come you don't do the newsletter anymore? It may be flippant of me, maybe insensitive of me, but I really don't want staff to do, to be doing work that doesn't have an impact. And if I'm not hearing from people, like, hey, why aren't you doing this? Then I don't, I, they, they have other projects they could be working on that has a bigger impact, so we kinda just walked away from that one, and nobody's come down on us. The identify how marijuana tax, uh, revenue will be spent in the city. So what we told the council at that time, it goes right into the general fund, and then council, every year, during the approval of the budget, decides where, you know, what, what do we fund? So that's where we are with that. Um, some cities have gotten aggressive and said they will only use it for police budget support or roads or parks. I would heavily encourage councils not to put things like that into a strict policy, because when you have a need over here and you need funding for it, but you said you're gonna spend all the money over here, it's really hard to make that change or that transition. 'Cause once you do, then the other people are saying, but you said you're gonna do it with this. And that's what we shared with the previous council as well, that, that wasn't, you know, we, we advised against it, and, you know, it never really got pushed in the creation of the budget last year. They just said they wanted to identify how it could be done. And then the last one is explore ways to engage area youth in the city's decision-making process. I thought there was two council members that were gonna run with this idea, they're no longer here. In my, uh, previous town I worked in, they did have a youth council, it was the Holland Youth Council. And they had, the city had a dedicated staff person, so they had finances and resources, so they hired someone that was the youth director for the city of Holland, not recreation, but just, she worked with this council. Uh, each person on the council, like, this council was assigned to a committee. However, they didn't have a voting role, because a lot of the committees, you have to be a registered elector to vote, like the planning commission, and Holland just had a lot more committees this way that had that rule in there. But they were there as an advisor, and as a staff person on that committee, we knew we had to engage that youth, and if it ever looked like they were just being a wallflower or a shy person, we had to find a way to work that out. I think there's a benefit to that, but I'm not hearing from, like, the schools, I'm not hearing from church youth groups, I'm not hearing from any of the youth institutions that are trying to push this. Like I mentioned, I felt like we had two council members last year that really were, you know, supporters of this idea, but they never got it really going, and neither of them are in council right now. So... Um, so that's kind of an update on where we are. The last thing I'm going to say about this is I've always struggled with the way we've done our goals, which is weird because I brought this process here. To the city council back in eighteen. I would rather see value statements. On what kind of community or what kind of city this council wants to be. And then you could throw in a couple of action things, like for next year. We already know when school lets out, we're going to redo Ely Street, that's one of the streets we're going to improve. We already know, starting March. April, if the weather doesn't improve too quick, but if improves March, we're going to be reconstructing the Hubbard Street parking lot. And we're going to be reconstructing Mayhem Park. So those projects have already been identified and we're diving into them. So for this new council to come and say, you know, we're going to do the Trestle Bridge, which is a, in my opinion, a great idea. Mostly because it was on a walking loop for me and my dog and my wife. But without funding for it, and Tracy and I would dive into this on Saturday with you. It's really hard, uh, hang, you know, put yourself on something specific if it's just not realistic. So it's somewhat, I mean, I don't think we need to get into like SMART goals, which are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic and timely. But I do think we should say, hey, you know, as a community, we want to be focused on improving the environment. That's hypothetical, or, you know, we want to be a community that's going gangbusters on development. And we just want to build, build, build. Or we want to be a community that has, you know, really good recreation programming. And let's figure it out, that kind of a thing. But it's up for this council on Saturday when we get together to really, you know, feed that stuff. Any questions, I mean, I've been talking for a lot here. About this update, about some of these goals that are in there that you want more clarification on. Anything you really like, you know, like, hey Joel, figure it out.
Oh, we're going to go, we're going to do all that Saturday. Start to finish.
Guys, well, in Saturday, you're going to be establishing going forward what you want. And if you want to carry something from here over, we can do that, that's fine. But really Saturday, you're going to be establishing what you want to do next, kind of a thing.
If it's not, um, it's not on this list, we can bring it up.
You can bring it up then. Yeah, very much so.
In times past, we've written on the whiteboard there what, uh, we want to see happen, so. That, that probably would do that again Saturday.
Yeah, yep, that, that process will be the same. And you're going to, you know, you'll be able to, you know, not rank them, but say, hey, I really like what Bill said, or I like what Mike said, or, you know. Well, you know, no, they said, but you're not going, I mean, you're, you're going to be able to do that process. What I wanted to do is just use this as an opportunity to give you an idea of. What those are, how we got those, where we are with some of them. And where are we failing or just completely abandoned some of them as staff? And give you, you know. Four days for you to start thinking in your own head, all right, how can I start formulating this or, you know. Being part influencing, you know, the direction we're going to go. Anything on here that really pops out to you that you want to dive into a little bit?
Probably several. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Hey, Will, is your mic on? Okay, yeah. Our, our IT person behind the wall sent a message to us.
Well, I definitely agree with the Trestle Trail Bridge. That I want to understand, because I know at one time there was talk of. Making it accessible for, uh, motor traffic.
Yeah.
Cars, but.
Orbs.
Yeah, orbs, yeah, yeah. Um. I, I think we should, that's, there's a whole group of people out there to the north that. If they want to get to J C Park or downtown, I mean, they're like coming down river and then crossing that, I don't know, it's not ideal. So. Yeah. And of course. The recycling one that goes without saying. Love to dig into that and figure something out. And I think my personal opinion on all this. And how I like to. I'd rather shoot for, um, just being the benchmark. There's no, I mean, if we could at least throw out there Saturday, what is the best scenario in, in all these cases or in others? Maybe they're not realistic, but I don't, I don't know why we shouldn't strive to be the, uh. The place that they even, you know, Holland, Sagatuck, somebody's, it's definitely out sea going plain well. It'd be nice that. Let's try to, even in a competitive nature, but let's. Try to be the, the case that they, they look at and, and want to emulate. I don't see why we shouldn't at least strive for that. There's a lot of constraints we might come across, but.
No, I, I would, I would, I would offer to you, you know, if, if there's a direction the council wants to go when they rank them and stuff. You know, that's fine, and I, I tell everyone, let's shoot for the moon. Tracy will be the one and me too that will. We'll, we'll pour you back down to earth with reality as needed. Because there's only so much you can do with resources, but, you know. There's also, you know, partnerships that you can make. You know, it doesn't just have to be the city that tries to solve a problem that, you know. If there's, you know, the direction the council as a whole wants to go.
What, what time is Friday's meeting?
So Tracy, do you have the schedule in front of you? Did you bring a copy of that? Good job, thank you. And I could pull it up, but I thought you had a hard copy. It's a little different than years past, that's why I'm asking Tracy to read the schedule because I want to be. Are there any dietary needs from council that we need to be aware of? Any vegetarians, any vegans? Those are the main that by, that I asked first because we had two of those last time.
Six o'clock. Is when dinner is.
Yeah, because you have a meeting that night, correct? In the earliest you can get here is like six thirty-ish?
I moved it up to four, so I should be here, I'm close to six.
Awesome, excellent, so we posted it for six. Uh, the plan was we were going to have you guys eat at six and then we're going to roll into the meeting at six thirty. So to make. We will reach out to you guys over this next couple of days for your menus on where we're going to get food from, we're not going to do that right now. Um, but plan on being here at six for dinner and then we'll start sometime between six and six thirty with the regular meeting. But be here at six then. And Michaela, make a note to email council tomorrow for that.
Move on to item number seven then, which is discussion regarding Alligan housing needs. Whoops, I missed number six.
Number six, please.
Back to number six, mid-year review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
All right, so in my report, the first line under the background is something I want to beat into the brains of city council. The annual budget is a policy document designed to determine what government services will be provided. And how they will be financed. We are at the very beginning of creating our annual budget for fiscal year twenty-six. Our budget, our fiscal year twenty-six budget starts on July first, twenty twenty-five and goes through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So starting Friday night, you will receive an update from all the major departments on what they accomplished this past year, more or less. What they'd like to do the next year. And then you'll have an opportunity to ask some questions. And then Saturday, you will be here. In the morning and then to the early afternoon with just Tracy and I. And we will go over, you know, what you heard last night. We'll give you a snapshot of the finances of where we stand. Um, you were all here when the auditor gave their presentation over the audited statements from last fiscal year. So you have a good understanding of where we stand on that. Um, and what we wanted to do with this report was just give city council. An idea of how our budget is structured into the different funds. So we have thirteen separate funds. You know, we've got the general fund, the perpetual care fund, major streets fund, the local streets fund. Our grants fund, our D D A fund, the positively elegant fund. Our reserve sinking fund, our capital sinking fund, our wastewater fund, our water fund. Our motor vehicle pool fund and the trust and agency fund. And then in that report, it also, next to each of those funds, it talked about what the purpose of those funds were. Uh, one thing to re- remember as council members is you can't always just move money between funds. So we can't use water fund to pay for a new police officer. Or to pay for the replacement of the Trestle Trail Bridge. So when you look at the budget, if you see four point three million dollars in the water fund, you can't say. Well, heck, why don't we forego this improvement at the water department this year to pay for the bridge? However, you could move money from the general fund to the water fund. Once you start doing that. We, as in Tracy and I, have failed you as advisors to council because that's a horrible business decision. Your water fund, your wastewater fund should be self-sufficient, it shouldn't be or take on money from the tax, the general fund, our property taxes. So if something happens to Tracy and I and someone else comes in here and says, oh, you can just borrow money and take it over there and you're repaid eventually. That's not good business decisions with public funds. Of those thirteen funds. We have thirty-three departments. And you can see those on that second page of the report, you can also see them on the screen. They're overseen by five, what I'm going to call major offices at the city hall or at the city. City manager's office oversees quite a few, finance department oversees some more. Or a little less, Department of Public Works, Police Department and the Water Utilities Department. What this does is this kind of shows you how we split things out and, you know. How detailed we get. Again, this is just very high level because each of these departments then have. Several accounts under each of them for the work we do. And then the last thing I wanted to show you is of our total revenue. Sixty-nine percent of it is used just to keep this, the lights on at city hall. And police department and government operating. And thirty-one percent is used for capital improvements. And those capital improvements have been planned for, for years in advance. So when a new idea pops in the head. Unless there is outside funding coming in to fund that new idea. A cut will have to be made from either an existing planned improvement or a cut will have to be made to operating. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, I understand most all of you understand that process. But again, we just wanted to use this opportunity right now to have that discussion with you or presentation with you. So we can be. Um, clear. About, you know, just the way the city's budget operates. You all have access to our fiscal year twenty-five budget and then I copied a link, it's on the second page of that report. Um, halfway down, it says for the F Y twenty-five, the total budget, that's a hot link, so if you click that link, it will open up. The actual budget for you, so you can dive in. You are more than welcomed, invited, encouraged, dive into that budget. If some numbers don't make sense to you or programs don't make sense, Tracy and I are here to sit down with you. And we can have those conversations on Saturday as well. Saturday gets, is kind of a fun little wild day, it's a real meeting, it's published, it's noticed. Council has made motions at that meeting in the past. Because they wanted to take care of some stuff during that meeting, uh, they just changed the agenda is what happened at one of them. They removed the invocation at that meeting after talking about it for about three months. They had enough votes and they said, let's just vote on it right now and. It went down real quick, they had it, okay. But, um. Feel free to, you know, come Saturday, you know, come Friday with questions for the departments, of course. But Saturday, you know, also be, you know, be willing or, you know, feel empowered to, you know, ask lots of questions of us. Yes, Will?
Uh, can you clarify? Two meetings ago, I think it was when we approved the. It wasn't the shortfall, but it was, um.
The budget adjustments?
Budget adjustments.
Sure.
Was that for fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, that's the one we're in right now.
Okay.
Because you had first quarter and second quarter budget adjustments.
Gotcha, okay.
And, uh, so historically, we, uh, try to keep twenty percent. Or north of a million dollars in our fund balance each year. We've been well north of that for several years, um, mostly just the way timing has worked out on our other projects. We, you know, they just didn't get expended. And the year that they were going to be expended, so the fund balance went up quite a few several years ago. Um, but that's kind of been a rule of thumb. Um, some cities do pass fund balance policies. Where they say, no matter what, we will never go lower than twenty percent or we'll never go, you know, lower than a number. Similar to how I say you shouldn't lock yourself into what you're going to do with certain revenues. I argue against going into an adopted fund balance policy. Um, just because something might come up. You never know when something's going to come up. Um, but you should have the courage as a council to hold your city manager accountable. And if he brings in something that's not in the budget. To say, hey, wait a second, this is a pretty big impact on our fund balance. And we're not comfortable going below this number right now. Or hold each other accountable if one of you gets really excited about a project. And say, we know this is a passion of yours, but this isn't, you know, in our budget right now and we don't need to dip into our fund balance right now. Uh, real quick into the funds. The reserve sinking fund and the capital sinking fund. So you'll see that at the top of page fourteen in the study session packet. And you'll see that now on the screen, correct? The capital sinking fund is the fund that was created when the city sold its interest in the Cockins Dam. Out on Lake Alligan, back in nineteen sixty-seven-ish, right? Thank you, Michaela. Um, the reserve sinking fund is the interest that we receive from the investments we've made from that sale. The reserve sinking fund, you're allowed to use as you see fit. We have just north of two hundred thousand in it. In my time here, we have not touched it. Because unless we have a big need for it, let's just let it sit there and grow and grow. The capital sinking fund has to be a vote of the people. And the last time that happened was in twenty fifteen. Twenty fifteen, the year before, two years before I got here, and it was the seed money that was used to build the riverfront stage. And the public voted for that because they wanted to make those riverfront improvements. Or I think there was a couple of other things that was in the.
Yeah, there was a bunch of things.
Yeah, it was, it was a long list of things, but the, I think it all went for the stage more or less at the end of the day because that was an expensive project. And a great project because I think that really got the, you know, rejuvenation of the riverfront going. The perpetual care fund, the cemetery stuff, which is on the first page of that report, is stuff that we can only use at the cemetery. Um, it's the money we get from people who purchase, uh, burial plots out there and they have to pay a perpetual fee to us for it. Does not even come close to covering. Does not even come close to covering the annual costs for maintenance, improvements out there, et cetera. We just don't touch that fund. I just, I like, I wanna touch it, but Tracy, it holds me accountable. And this is when we talk about holding people accountable, she's like, Joel, I know you have this project you wanna do out there, but this is not, you know, a necessary one for us to be diving in to use this one. There might be one down the road that might come up that we agree, yeah, let's get into this. But we like to keep those funds kind of just growing, even if it's a slow grow. You know, we don't like to touch those too much.
Is that where the tree, um, the tree care out there in the cemetery, it doesn't come out of that fund?
That comes right out of the general fund.
Why is that?
Um, just because it's affordable, I mean, it's the way it works. We, we, we can, but, 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 I was gonna say, because it's affordable, that's not the phrase I wanted to use. That is a way we have chosen to afford it. The general fund is able to absorb that cost. Um, so it's not just tree care, but I think you're referencing the whole lawn care package we have up there. So we have a contract for mowing and two, uh, leaf pickups. Cleanings out there, a spring one and a fall one. We contract that out, I think we're on our third year of our third, a third year of a three-year contract this year, right? Or did they, they just extended it, actually?
Extended it.
Yeah, the previous council extended it, thank you, Tracy. So that covers that, that comes out of the general fund. Uh, we've been struggling for years to find a mason that does quality masonry work to repair the brick columns. The ones that are quality will not bid on it because it's too small of a job. And the ones that bid on it do not have the capability to do it at a level that is appropriate for the Oakwood Cemetery. Uh, the one that was shown to me and highly encouraged for me to contract with them, did a building downtown and used a different color mortar than the entirety of the entire building downtown. And you can see it plain as day twenty feet away. And that's not a good mason. And we're not gonna throw that, we're not gonna throw that work on there because that property is too important to just put in, you know, a subpar workmanship on it. I was really hoping that the tech center had a masonry program. They have a building trades program, but not a masonry program. Because I think they did a great job with the bicycle racks. Those are amazing to me.
Could you give some more information on the capital sinking fund? Like what it is and
Yes.
Beyond the investment?
Sure, so the capital sinking fund is the fund that was created when we sold the Cockings Dam. Tracy, off the top of your head, is it north of two point four, two point?
It's over two million, it's just under three because we used it for
Correct.
So it went under three million, so it's two point six or seven now. But I have a whole packet of information I can bring Saturday to, or email you guys, so you can review it before Saturday. So you can get familiar with the details behind it. I have a whole bunch of information on it. I was gonna let you know too, in addition to the budget document that Joel said to refer to when you guys are getting ready for Saturday, I would also review the audit. There's, um, notes to the financial statement in the audit that explain a lot of these things as well. And from the auditor's perspective, there's information on our sinking fund and all the other funds and descriptions on, a whole bunch of notes on the, on the financial statements that explain things really well.
Yeah, and just to be clear with that, with that, with that fund right there, it is a vote of the people. And I believe we can't access it until it's north of three million. I think the charter says that, that it has to be north of three million before you can go do a vote of the people.
So does that include the interest or is that separate?
So the interest that comes off that fund, do you know the breakdown exactly off the top of your head? Uh, I would say this, a portion of the interest goes to the general fund. A portion of the interest goes to the reserve sinking fund, the one we do have access to. And then a portion stays on that.
A third, a third, a third, if it's over, um, three million. If it's under three million, if it's over two million, it's one-fifth, two-fifths, two-fifths. And then that's how the interest gets sent over to that sinking fund and the general fund. And that's the only interest we can use. Because, uh, the, either a third or a, a fifth of it stays in that capital sinking fund to help it grow. And that we can't use easily. The, the reserve fund and the general fund interest we can use when we want.
Any other questions?
And if you guys think of any between now and Saturday, if there's anything you want me to bring specific detail on, I have a lot of information, I can, you know, try to gather it for you guys beforehand. But if not, I, I can get it whenever you guys need it, so.
So, so again, for Saturday, Friday night is updates from the main departments on what they accomplished last year, what they'd like to see happen this upcoming year, also opportunities for you to ask direct questions. Um, Saturday is, we are not inviting the various advisory boards to give updates. Uh, we want to use that time for us to build a stronger relationship with the new council. And let Tracy and I really go slow with you guys as we identify the direction you guys would like to see city go and really have a conversation amongst yourself. It's very informal, relaxed kind of a conversation. Uh, Tracy will have her computer and all her paperwork, will be sitting over there in the corner. We won't be up here because we're looking at that TV and it's just more informal that way. But we don't know where we sit budget-wise for the upcoming year. We have an idea of what our taxes are gonna bring in. We have projections, because we do like a three-year kind of budget projection, the current and then two, two years out. So we have an idea, we understand our capital improvements are coming down the pipeline that we need to talk about, make some tough decisions on. But if you come in and say, hey, we want a million dollars for X, we'll write that down. But we're not gonna be making a decision that day to put a billion dollars to what, some program. Any other questions?
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll go down to item number seven now. Discussion regarding elegant housing needs.
All right, I would like to just take a few moments to talk with this council about housing. Um, the reason I wanna talk to this council about housing is last week I met with three of them. Uh, Will Walker, Melanie Hooker, and Carl Canales. I think they all wanted to talk about housing at some different level or perspective, which is great and fine. Um, but I felt it was important that I bring this to the next study session, so the whole council is aware of conversations that are going on at city hall. Um, in my report, I specifically focused on what kind of housing the council would like to see us pursue over the next, you know, phase of, you know, developing the city of Alligan. With the caveat that the city is mostly developed. It's not like we're sitting on hundreds of acres of vacant how, you know, land in the city of Alligan. Um, I, I identify four places where we have the opportunity for more housing. One being the elementary schools that are gonna be vacant within the next twenty-four months. I'm already having conversations with the superintendent about future uses there. Uh, Community Action has recently purchased the former United Way Building on Grand Street. Um, there's an opportunity for us to do a development there. And I just realized I didn't put the concept plan that I was, talked about in my report in the packet. So I apologize for that, I'll email that out to council to give you an idea of what I was looking at. Um, the courthouse project's wrapping up, so their overflow lot over off Cutler um, may not be needed.
Do you know how mu- how much space that would be?
Couple acres, I think, if I'm not mistaken. I can look that up for you. But there's an opportunity there for housing development. And then, uh, throughout the city, we have several, what I'm gonna just call, large lots. And these were areas where the planning commission identified the opportunity for, uh, those lots to be split apart if the owners wanted to, obviously. Um, tiny homes to be developed in those areas, so. I think it's just an opportunity for the council, you know, for the remainder of the meeting here to just get your feelings out on the table. How do you approach housing, what do you think about housing, what would you like, like to see?
I had written down here, when I saw that on here, Joel, townhouses, condos, single-family homes, apartments, slash hotels. No, we do need one. Um, townhouses and condos, that would, I mean, that takes care of a, a lot. I don't know if this new development on Delano Street, is he putting in townhouses and condos?
Delano's all, single-family homes.
Okay. So there's gonna be a need for townhouses and condos. That's just what I wrote down. Some kind of homes or something to help maybe the homeless, a, a shelter of some sort. That, to me, is important since we're having so much trouble with our public facilities that we have around town being destroyed, I don't know if the homeless are destroying them or just vandals.
Yeah, we, we kinda talked about that as well, and I wrote down transitional housing, so that in the middle. But I also wrote down homeless shelter, because I did not realize we don't have one in Alligan County at all, so.
In the county?
Yeah, in the county, there's not one, right, yeah. But there was a lot of talk of, we've got this population, it's called Alice. Joel can rattle off what it means, but basically it's people that are working and they're barely getting by. So they're making more than minimum wage, but they're making under what they call like the, the threshold, which is twenty-six bucks an hour, which are our law enforcement, our teachers, our factory workers, you know, like most of our community. And they're not able to buy what some of these houses are in. So we had talked a lot about like affordable housing, whether they're buying or renting, is really hard. Also understanding that the homes that we could buy ten years ago at a hundred thousand dollars are three hundred thousand dollars now. You know, and so it, there was a lot of that. And, and we, we basically came up with, we just gotta educate the public on the different loan programs and trying to attract more of that middle of the road. You know, there's low-income housing, there's, there's, you know, rentals that are higher end, but what about those people in the middle, you know?
Isn't there a grant program for doing remodels in city areas that could qualify for that, a lot, something along those lines?
Not remodels, uh, right now Lake Shore Habitat has a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that we helped them get through MISTHA. And they're doing a I'm gonna use the words, it's emergency home repair. So, you know, roof is failing, HVAC system is failing, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, uh, my focus on this is more of, um, owner-occupied housing. Um, there's a lot of people in and around Alligan that want to own a house. And homeownership is very, uh, very good for cities. That if people own their own homes, I think it's also very good for people to move up economically. So that's kind of my focus.
Anybody else? Anything, I'm also interested in landlords gouging their renters. I think there's a lot of that going on. I don't know if there is or not, but that would have, that would also address some of this stuff in the housing.
Yeah, that Yeah, that's a real good point. I have heard over the years of really bad conditions, high rents, yeah, some of the rents are outlandish.
Yeah, that goes along with what I was saying, which is if, if there's more opportunity for people who are paying outlandish rent to buy a house, that, um, takes away the incentive for those high rents for, uh,
I understand what you're saying. We need to identify that.
Yeah.
Anything else by anyone? Well, that takes care of that one, then we'll go down to number eight, review of the council agenda.
You know, Bill, I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll back up.
Where do we go from here, though? Is there a comprehensive strategy? What, what do we do?
So, first of all, no, there's not a comprehensive strategy, I would not say there is. Uh, the city master plan identifies, because it's the physical development, identifies areas and types of housing. I mean, if you take your time to read the master plan, there's a whole section on housing that can kind, that's, you know, the planning commission has approved or adopted and city council has adopted. I don't think there's a comprehensive agreement from city council on what you'd wanna do as an approach to housing. Unless you're just gonna say everything under the rainbow. But then if it's everything under the rainbow, you're not gonna get anything really accomplished, in my opinion. I think there's an opportunity on Saturday probably to expand on this conversation. Uh, give people time to digest. Uh, think, you know, spend some more time thinking about it, focusing in on what you wanna do or what you feel the city should do. Um, as I mentioned to the three that were meeting with us, there, there, there's, there's already people in this arena doing this work. Join their team. Join their team, I mean, if you're passionate about something, go get involved with them. You know, um, it's important, I think, for organizations not to get into mission creep. But this is the first time as a council, minus, you know, Mayor Perrigo, who can't be with us this evening, um, that you've talked about, you said the words housing. So I, I think you're at the infancy stages of trying to decide, is this something, you know, what direction the city council wants to go in. But I think Saturday will be an opportunity for you guys to have that larger discussion. And then I would also just remind council, as I do with everyone, base your opinions in facts. Housing costs are expensive, construction costs are expensive. Um, you get into supply and demand, if you have little supply and high demand, guess what? Product costs are expensive, so. I think there's a lot of factors of which I'm not an expert in at all, on why, you know, housing is the way it is.
I appreciate, Joel, what you've been doing, you've been going above and beyond as far as pushing and stuff, and I appreciate that very, very much. As a community member and as a business, a former business, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
As far as the master plan goes versus the planning commission and the city council, is there like a deviation that is a, of, an option, or how does that work, I guess, together?
Yeah, so I, I would say there's not a, there can't be a deviation. If your master plan says X, and the, I mean, there's a reason why the planning commission puts it together and the city council adopts it. And then if all of a sudden the city council starts going this way, from what the master plan says, the city council has to tell the planning commission, go back and amend the master plan. Because if you have a developer come in and say, I wanna do this, and the master plan says, yeah, it fits our master plan, you're good to go. And the city council says, no, we're not gonna approve your development, you are setting up a perfect lawsuit against the city council. Because your master plan is your guiding document for the physical development of the city. So dive into that, as I mentioned, it's a new council, dive into that. I think it addresses a lot of the aspects that I've heard from the conversations I had regarding housing development. As Melanie mentioned, uh, the Alice, so that is asset limited, income constrained, employed. So it is households that are employed. They don't have many assets, so they're not, they're not sitting around with fifteen thousand dollars in a checking account. They're not sitting around with a thousand dollars in a checking account, they're probably not sitting around with five hundred dollars in a checking account. So they, they have no assets. So they, they have no assets. They're employed and their income is severely constrained. It's not like, you know, they're making, you know, forty bucks an hour, thirty bucks an hour, twenty. I know you said twenty-six, but the ones I interact with, the ones I am exposed to. They're at eighteen to twenty dollars an hour. And they have two kids. Kind of a thing. And their housing, their, their job isn't that stable. It could be job here today, gone tomorrow, kind of a job, because they made their boss mad one day. So. The master plan doesn't address societal issues. And I think. This is just me speaking as the city manager in my profession. I think it's very difficult. For the local government. To get involved into those societal issues, especially a local government of our size. The county has a little more resources with On Point. The county has a little more resources with Community Action, which also does a weatherization program. I didn't mention that. Patrick, when you asked about grants or improvements, there's a weatherization program they oversee to. Weatherize people's houses, make them more energy efficient, which will reduce energy costs. And if you can reduce energy costs. That makes it easier for the Alice population to own a house or stay in the house they already own. Cause their monthly utility bills go downside. So. When you look at that master plan, if you're looking for it to say, hey, we need to feed all the people in Alleghen, you're not gonna find that kinda language in there. Cause it talks mostly about the physical development and the types of development we wanna see. Is that, I mean, did that answer your question, Patrick? Alright.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll move on then to a review, a view, a view of the council agenda. Do you have anything to add to it or anything else?
Nothing.
Okay.
We just need to excuse Mayor Perrigo, so we'll have to have a motion in a second for that.
Yeah. Thank you. Do we do that before the pledge, after the pledge? What? After roll call?
Uh, after roll call, but before the pledge.
Okay. So someone will need to. Okay, well, let's get back here by seven o'clock.
Well, at seven o'clock, if you'd give us a roll call, please, Michaela.
Sure. Councilmember Canales, councilmember Hooker.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Westover.
Present.
Councilmember Zeter.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Morgan.
Present.
And Mayor Perrigo. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
If we could actually get a motion to excuse.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Perrigo.
You told me that, too. All those in favor, please. Vote by aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we need to, item number four, four A, approval of the regular council meeting agenda for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I'll get to hanging this yet. Okay, approval, item number five, approval of the study session minutes from December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion? We have one motion?
In second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please vote by the normal sign. Opposed? Motion carried. Five B, approval of the regular meeting minutes from December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Need a second? So moved. Vote by, I'm sorry. We have a first and a second. Please vote by the normal means. Opposed? Same. Motion passed. I am sorry, I am, I'm as bad as Roger was in the last meeting.
You're fine.
I'm sorry. Let's see, we'll go down to number eight. Public hearing for the amended twenty-four, twenty-eight City of Allegan Parks and Recreation Plan and adoption of resolution twenty-five oh one approving the amended plan. Do we have any discussion?
Real quickly, yeah, thank you, mayor. So last year, city council, you approved our recreation plan. We are required per the state to have a five-year recreation plan on record with the state if we want to apply for any state funding for our parks. They informed us after we adopted that and submitted it that we needed to amend our plan to include a section on goals in the plan. So that's all we did. We had an action plan in there, but they said an action plan is not a goals. So we went through the process of just updating that. We noticed this public hearing in the paper per the requirements of the state law. And so this evening, you're just going to receive comments on this amended plan, which more or less is restating our action plan as goals. So nothing significant has changed in the plan.
Do we need the voter have a?
You have to open the floor for public comment.
Okay. Floor is open for public comment? For, for public comment? Move on to the next agenda item?
Now we need a vote by council to adopt resolution twenty-five oh one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a vote.
I'll make a motion that we adopt plant, sorry, yeah, resolution twenty-five point oh one.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, vote by the normal means? Opposed? Motion carried. Item number nine is public comments. Are there any public comments to be made? Since that, we'll move on down to item number eleven, eleven A, city boards, commissions, and area agencies. Airport advisory board, January meeting, Mayor Pro Tem Morgan. The meeting came to order. They elected a vice, a chair and a vice chair. The chairman is sitting in our audience this evening. Other than that, he went over what he wanted to do for his flight school. Updated on the T-hanger stuff is on time and going to be coming up this spring. And then that's about it. So we'll go on now to eleven A two, downtown development authority, January meeting, Mayor Perrigo, she is not here.
So I will handle it. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Morgan. Just like we do with all of our boards at the beginning of the year, the DDA elected their new chair and vice chair persons. And the DDA also selects one person from amongst themselves to sit on the public spaces commission. So all of that was handled at this last meeting. We talked about our planned events for twenty twenty-five in downtown Allegan, which we'll get to a little bit on tonight's agenda. They approved that slate of events at their meeting. We discussed the proposal fifteen-minute parking spaces in the new Harvard Street parking lot redesign that's slated to begin this year. And then kind of just reviewed our refuse and recycling program that's just turned a year old now this month. And just making sure that our businesses are still on the up and up on how to treat that program and how to best utilize that program. And then we just kind of went over some high-level goal setting and budget planning that we'll really dive into at their next meeting in February. And about covered it.
Thank you, Parker.
Mm-hmm.
A three, eleven A three, positively elegant quarterly meeting, council member Hooker.
We also elected our, our officers. We discussed the New Year's Eve twenty twenty-five and the silent disco and the ice skating was a big hit. It was interesting that it was like, like, I don't know, anyway, the ice. I was like, oh, how are we going to have it? It was really cool. It was packed the whole night if you were down there. We talked about better ways to use the confetti. And then we approved all the events with the addition of a fall festival of some sort the first weekend in October. So that sounds fun. And I don't remember what the, there was one other thing. Oh, the cabin fever concerts. So those are going to be moved to the Griswold and there will be beer and wine. And so we approved that with the exception of February, we are unsure of because it was scheduled for Super Bowl Day. So waiting on that, but otherwise, yeah.
Well, thank you. Eleven eight point four, public spaces commission, January meeting, council member Canales.
Okay, so we did elect officers and then we reviewed the parks and rec plan. Discussed for a while pollinators and butterfly parks. Were we considering adding sections to some of all the parks where there'd be kind of a wild space for pollinators, butterflies, so forth. The next thing we talked about was possibility of green burial at the cemetery. Talked about that for a while and there's a lot more to be talked about. There's also mention of sidewalks for the new school that are going to be put in. And that's about covers that.
Thank you, council member Canales. Okay, finance department, eleven B one, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. We have accounts payable, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents, payroll of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-one cents, which a total disbursement of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Motion to approve.
Support.
It has been approved and supported. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Request to adopt resolution twenty-five point oh two, approving the twenty twenty-five hardship exemption guidelines. Who's going to take that, Joel?
I can handle this real quick. I'd like to thank Michaela for putting the report together for the city manager's office. This is an annual action that city council must take. So as council is well aware, we charge a property tax on all property in the city. As part of that property tax, the property owners have the ability to come in and discuss their property taxes through the board of review, also come in and say that the valuation is wrong or that they can't afford their property taxes due to the income that they make. This is what this deals with. So what you're being asked to do is to adopt the hardship exemptions policy guidelines for the board of review to follow as they review these inquiries. This is a annual process the city goes, as I mentioned before. This has been the guiding document. It comes from the state and it is set in stone. Those numbers are hard lined that way. You do not have to adopt this. You also can just say we aren't going to give hardship exemptions to anyone. I think everyone on the, round the DS, I think only Mayor Pro Tem Morgan has sat on the board of review before, correct? Any questions? It's one very small way of trying to make housing more affordable to tie into our discussion from the study session.
Okay, we need to, is there any other discussions? We need to have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five point oh two?
So moved.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Save by the normal. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Down to public works. Request to approve resolution twenty-five point oh three, accepting the dam risk reduction grant from Eagle and authorizing city managers sign the grant. Doug, do you have something to say or is?
Yeah, I'm going to let Doug run with these next three items.
Thanks. The city applied for a dam risk reduction grant through Eagle and that grant money is to be used for some repairs that Eagle suggested that we get done to the dam. Repair, replace some catwalk, install some sheeting so we can do repairs on our stop logs in there and address some issues at the powerhouse. What we're asking now is the city did receive that grant, so we need the council to approve the city manager as the designatory on that agreement.
Okay, are there any questions, council? I was just noticing the grant amount is for one million. The city portion is a hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty. We budgeted actually two hundred and eighty thousand, so.
So it's a savings.
The savings. It's a bonus. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-five oh three.
We have a motion to adopt resolution?
I'll second.
And we have, it has been adopted, not adopted. Anyways, we need to vote. All those in favor?
Bill, is there any discussion in council on accepting this grant?
Did that first.
Oh, did you? Okay, sorry. Thank you. I was reading body language. I thought someone wanted to speak. Sorry.
We need a motion. We've got that, so now we need to vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Quest to authorize a purchase order from Milbacher and Sons for improvements to the city-owned dam removal of the upper portion of the powerhouse in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Following the city's purchasing order, excuse me, purchasing ordinance, we reached out to a contractor, Milbacher and Sons in the area, asked them to provide us the price to do the work recommended by Eagle in their report. They shot back a price, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars to do mobilization, install sheeting, and the other work listed on the P O. So we're asking permission to allow Milbacher to complete that work.
Okay, do we have any questions, council? Yeah, I do. Was that put out to anyone else?
No.
Well, we did. So when we applied for the grant before, when we knew it was a ten percent grant, Lawrence Fisher gave us the program for that grant, the program budget. They do dam work all over the Midwest and they, it was two point eight million. That's how we came up with the two hundred and eighty thousand. So while this exact work wasn't bid out, the overall project, the idea of what we needed to do was, you know, received from another company. Our purchasing ordinance allows us to utilize one contractor when it's a design-build project, and that's exactly what this is. It's a design-build project. So we're satisfied in our purchasing ordinance. And then just one off, I do want to take one second here because there might be people watching at home. As people are aware, a previous city council has made a motion to remove the dam if we can agree on the design, which we already have, and the funding comes into play. All these improvements we're making here are foundational to that dam being removed. So while they are going to be, this work is going to improve the safety of this dam, minus the catwalk, so the three C, C walls we have going in here are all things that have to happen anyways when the dam comes out. So it's kind of a bonus, in my opinion, that we're moving this, this way. Also, very, very thankful for the work Milbacher has done and, you know, meeting with us, we reached out to them directly once we knew we had the grant, but it was only a million dollars. And we're like, well, the city doesn't have one point two eight million to put in here. You know, is there a way for us to get around? And they got creative on coming up with some of that design and conversations with staff here.
Any other questions? Okay, we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve the dam project.
We have a motion. We need to have it second.
I'll support.
Has been, a motion has been made and it has been supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Eleven E three, request to authorize purchase order for fleece and vandenberg for inspections on the dam powerhouse in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
The Eagle report also included, strongly suggested that we look at the structural integrity of the dam and more specifically the right-hand side gates. So we engaged police and vandenberg to do underwater survey, give us underwater analysis of the gate, see what condition they're in, whether or not they're leaking, whether they're failing, if there's any issues that we should address for the Eagle requirement. Police is also going to do a structural analysis of that lower concrete section of that powerhouse. So, and then they'll do an analysis of it to see what may happen if and when Milbacher takes off the upper level. So while they're doing their inspections, Milbacher will be overdoing the work in the Kellman's River area itself. And then once Milbacher's done, they should be able to move it over to the powerhouse and demo that top portion.
Any questions, council? Okay, we need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the fleece and vandenberg inspection.
We have a motion to approve fleece and vandenberg. We need to have it.
Support.
Supported. We have a motion and it's supported. All those in favor, please vote by the normal way.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is passed. Okay, move down to eleven F. Thank you very much, Doug. Move down to eleven F, eleven F point one, request to approve the twenty twenty-five event schedule.
I'll go ahead and take this one. Yeah, so the way this works in the past and this time around, the positively elegant board puts together the slate of the year's events. They voted and approved this slate at their meeting on Wednesday. And then the DDA does the same at the Positively Allagren Board's recommendation. And they also voted and approved this slate that's before you tonight, and you are the final stamp of approval. So just to kind of walk you all through, this mostly should look very familiar to you if you've paid attention to the downtown Allagren events in the past. There are typically twelve weeks of rolling on the river. Those take place every Friday, June through August. This year, there will only be eleven rolling on the river concerts. We are excluding the July fourth holiday. So we will not be holding a concert on the riverfront on the Fourth of July. Bridge Fest is always the second Saturday in June. That happens to be June fourteenth this year. We hold it on the second Saturday in June for the Second Street Bridge, fun fact. And then Fork in the Road picks up the Monday after Bridge Fest. That is, falls on June sixteenth and then continues every Monday through the end of August. Sidewalk sales in the downtown businesses established as being the last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of the month of July. Looks like July three Jubilee is not on the screen before you, but that is always on the third of July, which I believe happens to be a Wednesday, Thursday. Perfect, thank you, Melanie. So yeah, that event is obviously the celebration of the Fourth of July holiday. We just do it on the third in downtown Allagren. And then we have planned a tentative fall event. You'll note that it's on the screen as a two-day event. The downtown business owners host a fall shopping event each year. And so we're going to tie into that and provide a little bit more kind of support and huzzah around that event. So that'll be the Friday, October third, and then Saturday, October fourth will be more of a day-long similar kind of feel to Bridge Fest, where there'll be attractions for families, kids, and adults that'll stretch throughout the day and into the evening and kind of end with the Regent Theater's Shocktober event kicks off that first weekend. So there'll be a horror movie at the theater at the end of the night. And then Small Business Saturday is obviously a national thing, but again, we like to throw our support behind that event and put a focus on shopping small and supporting local. Festival Fridays are every Friday in December before Christmas. There are three of them this year, the fifth, the twelfth, and the nineteenth. And then finally, we cap off the year with a New Year's Eve twenty twenty-six on Wednesday, December thirty-first.
Thank you, Parker. Any questions? I was going to mention the July third. Why, we're not having that.
Yeah, as I went down the list, I realized I was not there.
We need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the downtown Allagren events twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion to approve. We need a second.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. We'll get started on our promotional material. And so the first thing that we always send out is like the save the dates. So there'll be hard copies of those. It'll live on our social media and website. And then each one of those events that I listed has their own promo behind it, too. So the first thing you'll see is the save the dates.
Thank you, Parker. Okay, moving down to item number thirteen, communications from city manager and council and mayor.
Very quickly for council, Friday, six o'clock, be here, we'll have dinner ready. And then we'll dive right into our presentations shortly thereafter. And then Saturday morning, I don't know what it is on the top of my head.
It's eight thirty.
Eight thirty for dinner or breakfast?
Correct.
Thank you, Michaela. Yeah, eight thirty for breakfast, then we dive right in at nine. So looking forward to seeing you. In regards to commuting, according to the American Community Survey, which is part of the census, seventy-four percent of city residents work within Allagren County. Twenty-five percent work outside the county. So Kent, Calamouz, Van Buren, and maybe Little River, Ottawa for the north side industrial stuff off U S thirty-one. The average commute time is twenty-two minutes. So that's all based off the census data I just pulled up on my computer.
Thank you for doing that. Well, you should probably send that to.
I'm good. I just wanted to share with council just so you guys have that information.
Appreciate it very, very much, Joel. Thank you for looking that up. Council, Mike, do you have anything to say?
I don't.
Is it Paul? Why do I, I keep wanting to call you Paul, Patrick. Paul Patrick. Will? Carl? Melanie?
I just want to thank you, Joel, for your quick action with the, the squatter, I guess. I don't know, whatever. There was somebody down by the riverfront in the parking lot and they took care of it really quickly. Thank you.
I guess that's it. Adjourn.